As such, we are allowed to use a remote platform. We are using Zoom. You can also follow along on Milton Cable Access's streaming service, or on Comcast Channel 8, or R C N Channel 3. And you can call in. All this information is available on the meeting agenda, which can be found on the public meeting calendar. So first, I'd like to welcome Mr. Dennehy to give us a COVID-19 update.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thought making sure I was unmuted. So yeah, we saw a slight uptick last week in the COVID positive cases. If you recall, the two-week look back a week ago, on March 18th, showed 46 positive cases for that two-week period. That jumped to 66 cases this week. I spoke to Caroline Consella today. It's quieted down a bit, but she did see a handful of positive cases come in yesterday. So again, with the parks open and with, you know, spring sports starting and people dining and some of the restrictions that came upon us with Phase 4, putting everyone in a bit of a comfort zone coupled with vaccinations becoming more readily available. I do ask people to continue to mask up, social distance, and continue to follow all the CDC guidelines. We will be offering another free COVID testing day. Mark your calendar for Sunday, April 25th, which is the end of April vacation. We thought that would be a good time. So from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. that Sunday, April 25th, at the Public Works Yard, we'll be hosting another free COVID testing day. The vaccinations are dwindling. As most of you know, the state is taking it over. There's some mass vaccination sites that are opening up. I believe Caroline Consella has her last 10 vaccinations to administer tomorrow. So we try to promote the state's website for getting vaccinated. I'll put it up on social media again tomorrow for those looking to get vaccinated. But from a town's perspective, the local vaccination program is coming to an end. And you'll see these mass vaccination sites and some of your CVSs and Walgreens taking the ball from here. But again, just a slight uptick. The positivity rate went from just under 1% to a little over 1%. But any uptick at this point in time is not good. We're all hearing about the fourth wave that could be coming, so we need to plan accordingly. We talked this week briefly about a soft opening of Town Hall, potentially April 12th, by appointment only for those that would need to come into the Treasurer's Office, say, the Building Commissioner or the Clerk's Office. We're going to hold off on that for a little bit of time. There are a couple of people in those offices that have yet to be vaccinated. So each of those department heads thought it would be more prudent if we get these folks vaccinated first. All of the social distancing measures and CDC guidelines that Bill Ritchie had instituted with Plexiglas and hand sanitizer, and we've deployed a very, very safe Town Hall, but we're going to hold off on that for at least the next week or so, understanding that schools, elementary schools, will be reopening this Monday with middle school and high school, I believe scheduled to open on the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy. And there's no, was the application ever put in for the Norfolk 8 Regional Vaccination Collaborative?
It was submitted. It's my understanding that the governor and the administrative team is going in the mass vaccination group.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Welcome, Mr. Zulis. I should say, my name's Melinda Collins. I'm Chair of the Select Board, and with me are Katie Conlin, Vice Chair of the Select Board, Arthur Doyle, our Clerk or Secretary. And you just heard Mr. Dennehy speaking. He's the TA. And Mr. Zulis just joined us, and he's a member of the Board. And Richard Wells is a member of the Board as well. And with us are Kevin Freitag, Town Council, who you'll see a little later, and Mr. Tom Doherty, our M C A C rep. So with that, I would actually, since Mr. Doherty is here, I'd like to take these a little bit out of order and hear from him. Actually, that is number three. Sorry, we moved it around. I'm still working off the old agenda. Mr. Doherty, welcome very much. And this agenda item is an update on Runway 4R and the related M C A C motion.
Yes, and perhaps Mr. Zulis would like to start with the introduction, and then I can take it from there.
Yeah, I can just give a little background. This is really a follow-on for what first arose last October, when we were presented with the three alternative dispersion paths that the MIT study group had proposed and had determined were flyable. And at that time, the Board charged me with a note to the other communities, because the FAA really puts it on the communities to try to achieve consensus on how to move forward. And so with these three dispersion paths, which go over parts of Quincy, parts of Hingham, parts of Braintree, the question was whether we could get some consensus from these communities on possible alternatives. We have had the opportunity to speak with Quincy representatives. Through the efforts of Senator Timblety, we were able to have a meeting with Mayor Koch and Councilor Palmucci, and with their Chief of Staff, Chris Walker. It was a very good meeting, very good discussion. Initially, we presented the alternative dispersion paths. We had a discussion about different ways to move forward, and they were very gracious and said that they would think about it and consider it. We had a follow-up meeting, this time with Mr. Walker, the Chief of Staff, and Mr. Traumatozy, the M C A C rep for Quincy. We presented some other alternatives for them to consider on these dispersion paths, and also the motion that Mr. Doherty has prepared for the M C A C. And I think it's fair to say that thus far, there isn't any indication that Quincy is going to be willing to reach some kind of consensus on using these dispersion paths. In fact, the mayor sent a letter before our meetings quite the opposite, that they weren't interested in pursuing these paths. And there were similar letters from officials in Braintree and Hingham. We've reached out to Braintree and Hingham. We haven't had the opportunity to meet with them as yet. And so that's where we are in terms of the attempt to get some consensus on testing these alternative, these three alternative dispersion paths that we discussed last fall. And the M C A C is going to be hosting a meeting next, I believe it's next Thursday, where it's anticipated that Mr. Hansman will present his final report on Block 2. And so that's what prompted the discussion, the idea to have a discussion tonight and have Tom in to talk about what his thoughts are on that meeting. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tom. And Tom, you can fill in anything that I missed.
Right, thanks a lot. So just going back a step, as you remember, the MIT study identified three flyable alternative 4R paths. And even just yesterday, after a request that I had made last fall, MIT provided information that I had requested then about the altitudes and the glide slopes of the alternative paths. The reason I asked for that is that, as you may remember, one of the paths goes over Hingham, then over the water. Another path, over a part of Quincy that I'll call it House Neck, then over the water for about seven miles. And then another part over Quincy west of that. And with regard to those, because of the distance at which they are coming from and entering into that set of paths, I wanted to understand the altitudes and the glide slopes, because that affects the noise impact. And as you might expect, for example, over Hingham, the altitude indicated in the materials is around 3,000 feet, which is a lot different than the 1,500 feet and the 1,900 and 1,500 feet respectively in the RNAV path over Milton as it exists. And keep in mind that noise is exponential. So, you know, 3,000, the noise, all things considered equal the noise impact at 3,000 feet versus 1,500 feet is four times, because it's squared, four times the difference. You know, less of a noise impact there. The one over House Neck has perhaps somewhere, it has less altitude, around, say, 1,900 feet versus, say, 1,500, but it is still got less of a noise impact. And going back a step, over Hingham with that glide slope, there are 20,000 fewer people affected. So MIT's analysis says that there are about 32,000 people affected by the 4R RNAV path. You're right, that's around 11,000. Altitude and glide slope at Hingham, so about, you know, only about a third of the number. We're not suggesting that these paths be substituted, that they be used in alternation and are subject to a governance model that would alternate the planes. And we discussed that as well with the Quincy representatives. So what we can, is coming to a conclusion. And if you think about it, four years ago, more than four years ago, Congressman Lynch, our Congressman for the 8th District, signed the Logan Airport Mass Port FAA memorandum of understanding creating the MIT RNAV study. He was, he is also, over that time and now, the co-chair of the Congressional Quiet Skies Caucus, which advocates restoration of overflight pre-RNAV dispersion, just as the MOU study is aimed at. He was very helpful to us, as you recall, last fall on the Runway 4L environmental assessment. He signed as the first signature that comment letter that was very important to us. The other thing he did a little later last fall is, and I think you may remember this, one of the problems in the other runway areas is the, are the departures on so-called Runway 33L, the departures there over Cambridge, Somerville, Belmont, Arlington, Medford, which are very concentrated as well, as our arrivals are. And last October, the Congress Fifth District, Catherine Clark, led an effort that said, wait a minute. Unlike 4R, where MIT has been able to identify three flyable alternative paths, in the case of that 33L group, they had a series of eight identified paths that MIT had considered, but the FAA, in response to a preliminary inquiry, said, no, none of those will work, which is unfortunate. And by virtue of that, Catherine Clark, the Congresswoman, said, here's a letter that says that we request that the FAA just use the results of the MIT study and deconcentrate and disperse the 33L departure paths. The 33L departure paths. The reason I mention that is, co-signing that was Congressman Lynch, our Congressman. So that's another indication that, given that the FAA owns the sky by virtue of the so-called Airplane Noise and Capacity Act of 1990, the municipalities have no rights to the sky. So it's not like a situation where a Congressman might hesitate to engage in a, you know, a municipal issue around water distribution or real estate taxes or anything. This is his jurisdiction. So that's the reason for asking an analogous letter to the 33L letter that would, and I'll quote, ask, that would support my request, which I've already made to Congressman Lynch as M C A C rep, that Congressman Lynch send a letter to the FAA asking the FAA to use the results of the MIT study to deconcentrate and disperse runway 4R arrival overflights, just as he co-signed a letter on the 33L side of it with Congresswoman Clark. And I will, I'll stop there. At another time, I think we can give a fuller update on those, the meetings with Quincy and where we are. They are not supportive of any alternate path that could affect Quincy in any way. We hear that. I also know that Congressman Lynch also has a background, and in addition to everything else, in collective bargaining. And it's not that this is about collective bargaining, but it is, I think, about trying to work together. And I think he could be helpful and instrumental in that, because we're asking for restoration, not anything other than that. Okay, I'll stop, I'll stop there. I think that's, that gives you the idea of what it is in terms of my request tonight and why.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty. Now, do any members have questions or comments?
Do we need a motion, Madam Chair?
We will, yes.
For the purposes of discussion, I would make emotional approval the updated Runway 4R letter and related M C A C comments as provided by him to us tonight.
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No, I'm seeing none. All those in favor, yes, Ms. Conlin?
I'm sorry, I lost my connection for a couple of minutes, so I missed a little piece of what Tom was saying. But my only comment is that I think we should support Mr. Doherty's efforts in this regard. And thank you, Tom, for all that you're doing.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, thank you, Tom.
You're muted.
I'm muted.
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Yes, Tom, I thought it was really clear and everything's laid out. I really, I really appreciate that. You're making it easy for Congressman Lynch, you know, to just help us here. And I appreciate it all the way around.
And thanks for, you know, thanks for doing this. I really appreciate it. I think it could potentially help. We'll see what happens.
Yeah. Great, absolutely.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks a lot.
Oh, Tom, what time is the meeting on the 8th?
So the 8th is a general meeting of the M C A C and a public meeting to which electeds will be invited. And it starts at 4:00, virtual meeting.
Oh, okay.
It usually goes until around 6:00. And I believe that, not in the beginning, but shortly after the beginning, Dr. Hansman will have a presentation of about 60, 60 minutes. A lot of that's going to be trying to deal with that 33L situation, where everything that he put forward previously, the FAA has shifted away. But it will also include 4R and some other things too. Indeed, one thing, it'll also have an update on the neighborhood environmental survey. I don't think, the FAA will comment on that. I don't think it'll be particularly further informative than what we already know about it, which was that the D N L was quite, demonstrated to be not as infective in noise. And also, it will supposed to have a very brief update on the status of the environmental assessment of 4L, which may simply say, it's not over, and they'll let us know when it's going to conclude.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Oh, yes, Ms.
Tom, could you send us the Zoom information for that? So that if we want to try to get into it, I'll try to attend at least a portion of it.
Yeah, it just got published a half hour ago, so maybe a little longer. But I'll send it to you after I get off here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're, actually, I'd like to move Item 7 up, because our next item would be to approve the warrant. And Item 7 is a citizen's petition to amend zoning bylaws, Sections 5C and 6A5. And before we talk about this, I spoke with April Anderson today, who is the Chair of the Planning Board. And because this affects zoning, the Planning Board is required to hold a hearing. And that hearing will have to be held before Town Meeting, since this article is going in Town Meeting. As a citizen's petition, it goes, it goes right in. And so their hearing is April 26th, which is a Monday, an unusual day for them, but that was the day they could do it, and it's at 7:00 p.m. I also wanted to let people know that if they look on the M A T V cable website, on the on-demand portion, they can look at the presentation from Ned Corcoran on this. This has to do with Winter Valley and additional, an additional building that the Milton residences for the elderly are seeking to put on that property where Winter Valley is. So that meeting is March 25th, 2021. You can look for the presentation there. It does not seem that they'll have time to do a presentation on the day of the hearing. So just wanted to let people know that. Do members have any questions or comments? Did everybody receive the citizen's petition? And we don't necessarily need to discuss it. We just need to accept it. But just in case someone had a question, Mr. Freitag is here too, so.
I'm sure I'll move accepting the citizen's petition to amend zoning bylaws, Section 5C and Section 6A subsection 5.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes, excellent. Okay, so we'll go back up to Item Number 4, which is to approve the April 27th, 2021 annual Town Meeting election and May 3rd, 2021 annual Town Meeting warrant. And I would say any motion should, should say that we will accept those subject to edits and the insertion of the citizen's petition to amend zoning, the zoning bylaws, Section 5C and Section 6A5 by the Warrant Committee.
Madam Chair, I'll move that the Board approved the warrant for the May 3rd, 2021 annual Town Meeting and the April 27th Town Election, subject to final changes and to include the citizen's petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 5C and Section 6A5.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Okay, excellent. So Number 5 is approval of Comtronics' request for proposals. And it's not clear to me. This came up when we were talking about an agreement to use space on a tower in Quincy for, I think, repeaters. Is that right, Mr. Dennehy?
Yes, to enhance the radio system. Public Works' radio system is becoming obsolete.
Right. So we chatted today about whether the Board really needs to approve this. It came up because the two belong together as far as operations, but it's, I'm still unclear as to whether the Board needs to vote on this or not. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I believe you already know where I am on this. So this is the I T T 57 contract. It's a statewide communications contract that allows all municipal agencies, entities, and their subdivisions to make purchases of equipment, specifically communications equipment. As I noted today, there are thousands upon hundreds of thousands of dollars of repeaters at multiple locations in this community. And as I said, this is an operational decision. We pay our department heads big money. These are decisions they make. And I don't think we need to vote on this at all. This is something that should be decided by Mr. Burton, possibly in his purview.
Madam Chair, I have a question. I saw a draft of an invoice, but I don't see an R F P. So I'm not really clear on what we would be voting on if we were to vote on it.
There is no R F P. It's a statewide contract.
Right, it doesn't.
The agenda says R F P, which is why I'm asking.
Right, well, that's why it's not, it's not clear that we even need to use, because it doesn't, it's not subject to, what is it, 30B? Yeah, because it's a statewide contract, so I.
The I T T 57 is part of 30B, and it's developed under 30B and has existed since, as I noted to Town Council today, I was part of the initial I T T 40, which was developed for the Commonwealth just after 9/11, and it's been used extensively, as I noted. It's used extensively by police, fire, DPW, and even the schools have made purchases of that community.
Mr. Freitag?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the Select Board, Kevin Freitag, Office of Town Council. I would just echo what Mr. Wells just said. Again, this is, these contracts are actually not subject to 30B, because the state procures these contracts for all the municipalities at once. So you can basically just go in and operate under the state contract. And also, given the past practices of Milton to leave these purchases up to the department heads, it seems to me that it would be appropriate for your Board to just simply, you know, pass this article and move on to the next item in the agenda.
Thank you, that's helpful. And that's what we are doing. Okay. So next, we need to appoint Mr. Dennehy and Lieutenant Caputo. Is that correct, Mike? Yes. As the single point of contact, which is kind of funny, because it's two people. But anyway, sorry, for EverSource. And this has to do with emergent situations and emergency preparedness. Is that correct? Would you like to flesh that out, Mr. Dennehy?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board. So Ryan Earl, who is our liaison to EverSource. EverSource is proactively asking communities that they supply electricity to to come up with a single point of contact. And the reason there's two names is I would be the backup to Lieutenant Caputo. When we have major storms, EverSource is inundated with priorities. And they get priorities from eight different people, and they don't know what the priority of the priorities is. So this is a proactive attempt, plan by EverSource, based on work that was done in Connecticut during Hurricane Isaias. This is where it kind of bubbled up and bubbled over, and the corporation decided that this was the route that they chose to take. I agree with it. It becomes fog of war and in snow and ice control. It becomes fog of war and, and, and snow and ice control and, and, you know, some serious windy events, and our, our poor liaison is getting hit from eight different directions and is not sure who to take command.
Well, thank, thank you, that, that's helpful. Would, would it be better for us to, rather than name people, name roles, and then whoever fills that role is, you know, we would just change that? Is this something that's going to be sent in every year or just updated as needed? How does that?
They're asking for a single person's name. We chose Lieutenant Caputo, worked with Chief King and Chase Berkeley, DPW Director. Most, most of you are aware that Lieutenant Caputo was also the, the chair of our local emergency planning committee, so that makes perfect sense. But no, that's a great point. I can bring that up to Eversource, you know, people move positions, you know, retire, move on, yeah, so.
Right, so if it's, so if it's always our, the chair of our local emergency preparedness group and the TA, then that would, you know, yes, Ms. Conlon?
Mench, I think Eversource's representative is in the attendee list.
Oh.
If you wanted to ask.
Oh, there's Ryan, yeah.
Oh, great. Mr. Earl is here. Hello, Mr. Earl.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you, thanks for having me. No, Mike explained it perfectly. I was actually texting my boss in, well, Mike, you were speaking because you explained it even better than I could have, so thank you. So this is obviously fluent. If Lieutenant Caputo couldn't be present, this is a conversation that I would have with Lieutenant Caputo and Mike, who would be that single point of contact? But I think if, you know, we're looking for Lieutenant Caputo's name, if he moves on from that position, then we'll put a new name in there. So Lieutenant Caputo and Mike are perfect for that role, and it's kind of how we, you know, it's how we do the storms currently, so I think it's a great fit.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Well, you're, you're a great, great partner, and it's, whenever I have a question, you're always quick to answer, and, and we really appreciate it. So, so, well, that's great. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we designate and appoint Lieutenant Chuck Caputo and Town Administrator Michael Dennehy as the single point of contacts for Eversource.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle? You're muted.
I am. Yes.
Mr. Wells?
No, yes.
Yes.
It's not April Fools yet. Ms. Collins, yes, that's tomorrow. Excellent. Well, thank you, Mr. Earl.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
You too.
Excellent. So future meeting dates. Our next Select Board meeting is the 14th, and then it's the 28th. I think that's, I think that's it at the moment. I'm sure that we'll be filling in with more meetings just like this one. And I'm sure we'll start early on May 3rd, but we have time to get there. So our, our next agenda item is actually an executive session, and I'd like to note that Mr. Doyle will be recusing himself for, for this executive session. So before I move to enter, he will be leaving us.
Thank you.
Night, Arthur.
Good night, everybody. Good night, Arthur. Have a great weekend.
Thank you.
Your backyard is very busy these days. Madam Chair, I'm just going to go off of this, and I'm going to come back on my phone, if that's okay.
Yes. Okay, so I move, I think Arthur's gone, yes? Yes, okay. I move to enter executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30, Section 21, Subsection A, Subsection 1, sometimes referred to as Purpose 1, to discuss an open meeting law complaint filed by Mr. Peter Colhane and the Select Board's response not to return to open session following discussion.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes, thank you. And let's see, we still have a few attendees, and we'll wait for people to, to leave before Hillary locks the meeting.
Thank you all, for those members of the public still in the meeting. I'm going to remove you from the meeting. You will be able to enter future Select Board meetings, but for now, you'll see the meeting close out.
Thank you, Hillary.
Shane, I'm booting the caption bot.